Sorry for the technical difficulties. This is the meeting of the select board on March 5th, 2024. Call to order at 6:05 PM. And if you're willing and able, please stand for the Republican agents.
I am a Republican agent of the United States. And to your Republican voters, in one nation, hundred individuals, all the Republicans and Texans.
Thank you. For the record, participating this evening, myself, Liz, Chair Jill Fisher, and Bill Ramsey is on Zoom. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We move one step.
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the minutes dated February 27th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Lincoln School Apartments' calendar year 24 budget presentation. Jennifer, come with us. Oh, nice to see you. Smell online?
Correct.
Oh, sorry. I did not read the remote language. I apologize. Just a second. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Bingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30, A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all of the participants of said recording. Is anyone else reporting the meeting? Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Orem. I'm here with the Land Use and Development Department, which works with both the Housing Trust and the Board of Managers. We're here this evening for the request of the approval of the 2024 budget for the Lincoln School Apartments. We submitted a memo to the board in advance going into more detail. I'm here to present the request, both with the Vice Chair of the Board of Managers, Steve Spall, as well as Special Ladies Counsel Susan Murphy. And the Chair of the Board of Housing Trust is also Lieutenant Jack Valby. Just a small bit of background. The day-to-day operations of Lincoln School Apartments is operated by Corporate Management, the management company, but they work under a Board of Managers, a five-member board, of which, again, Steve Spall is the Vice Chair. They worked together and they voted approval of this particular budget that's before you now. And we're an additional request to ask the Board to possibly vote to waive the cash flow rent and allow it to go back into the reserves to help with the capital needs of the building. To touch on that, Steve Spall, if he's available, could touch on that portion of the program?
Sure. There are significant needs at the property. There's some immediate life safety needs that we'd like to use this money to address. We've also, we're trying to commission a study to get to the bottom of all the work that needs to be done. And there's a considerable amount of work that needs to be done. The property's been ignored for a long time. So we're asking that we leave the half a million dollars or so in the replacement reserve to utilize to address immediate needs.
To touch on that, so the trust and also the Board of Managers will be hoping to look at a feasibility study to address several different needs. But this evening, the amount that we're asking to possibly return to the reserves is about $140,000. And that would bring the capital needs budget to about half a million. And for those, the trust, the Board of Managers has delegated a staff to identify out of the CNA short-term solutions for, to extend the sprinkler system, to update fire safety systems and things like that, just that are already on the CNA for this year. This will allow us to cover those costs while on a parallel track looking at a feasibility study for the next steps for the property.
Okay. And the staff you're referring to, that's Corcoran, would do that?
Actually, it's.
It's you.
Yeah, me and my army, I have Donna, and Susan, and of course, the Board of Managers. We have a lot of great people, so.
Excellent. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Steve, and all that you do. The Board of Managers appreciate it. Joe, do you have questions?
Yeah. Do you have a sense of how large the capital need really is?
Yes.
I know you want to nail it down, but just in broad strokes.
Sure, in broad strokes, we have done studies, engineering studies on both the roof life, there's three rooms on the property, as well as the building envelope. The building has a long and a history of leaking, which we attributed to windows, which in reality, it's the building envelope, particularly on the older portion. That's the one that has the heaviest needs, so it's a high number. I mean, these are all estimates, but we would imagine it's about two to three million dollars.
Okay. And are there plans to enhance elevator service in the long?
There is a way to do that, but unfortunately, it's a larger-scale project, which would honestly be, if it expanded the building, because there's really no location presently to have another elevator shaft. So at the end, towards Elm, there could be a second one added, which would be great based on issues we've been having with the elevators.
Okay, great. No other questions? Really appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you. Bill, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just so briefly, Jennifer, Steve, thanks for all you're doing. Very much appreciate it. We just replaced all the windows, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay. But they're still leaking?
Well, the windows aren't leaking. The building itself is leaking. There's a lot of, the brickwork needs to be pointed up across the property. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, as Jen mentioned, two or three million, just to get it back to where it needs to be before we even address the interiors.
How old's the roof? You know?
I don't know how old it is. We do have a plan in place to maintain the roof as long as we can, because the building envelope should be addressed before the roof.
Right, right. Okay. All right, and the feasibility, so I guess the 140, you're looking at maybe sprinklers?
Yeah.
A sprinkler system repair, obviously, replacement, obviously, I 100% agree with that. What about the, how much is the study going to cost? Any ideas there?
I don't. Jen, have you gotten any bids at all?
We've not. We've just been on a conversation, but in speaking to professionals, we're estimating it could be a minimum of $50,000. It would be an in-depth study. The Housing Trust is in support of funding that.
Okay, all right. Well, listen, thanks for all the work you're doing there. I really appreciate it. Nothing else.
Jen, did you want to answer a question about the roof?
So the roof is approaching its end of life. It has about two to four, depending on which one. There's three of them. But we did just go to the Board of Managers, a biannual project, where they'll come out and look and address any seam issues, any leaks, any caps. We're also going to, we're going to request the Board to actually do that sooner than later, and if we can get an estimate on how that's looking, get a new report, because there are some grants coming up that we could, with a newer report, address and maybe try to get one of those to help with the, offset the cost of the replacement.
Well, I mean, if I could follow up on that, but the roof should be good for at least 25 years. Do you know what year it put in, Jen?
I believe it was 1994.
Okay, yeah, so it's two. Yeah. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Well, thank you again, Jen, and Donna, and Steve, and Susan. I know that a lot of work has gone into this and with your support as well. We know that a lot of work needs to be done in that facility, and it's certainly a priority for us, American citizens living there, and want it to be as comfortable as possible. So I appreciate the idea of reinvesting in the capital. I think that makes a lot of sense. And certainly, I appreciate the support of the Affordable Housing Trust as well. I know this is a priority for them. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. Ready to proceed?
Yeah, but I just want to clarify something. So one item we're going to be voting on is transferring money to the replacement reserve account. What is the current level of funding of that?
So for the year, there's a placeholder for $250,000, but the capital needs assessment recommended 372. This would add this, bring it to half a million. The full account is probably between nine and one million dollars, but we base the recommendation on the CNA. So that's why there's those placeholders, and then this, we take it every year and put in. So that would be the reason, plus the 145.
So with that explanation, I would move to approve the waiver of the cash flow rent payment of $141,478 due for 2023, called a condition that such amount be transferred into the replacement reserve account.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well.
And I'd make a motion to approve the 2024 operating budget of the Lincoln School Apartments LLC. It's voted on by the Board of Managers and submitted for consideration to the Select Board with the following changes. A, increase the replacement reserve deposit by $141,478 from $372,000 to $513,478. And B, reduce the cash flow rent payments from $141,478 to zero and to approve the 2024 replacement reserve budget with the following change. Increase the contributions from $372,000 to $513,478.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good night. Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is discussion of FY '24 plans for the settlement funds.
So I can take this, we had a great conversation last week, or the beginnings of a good conversation. That prompted a lot of work. Liz Miller, our new social worker, has done a lot of work in the last several days to organize this effort. I just need a little bit more time to go through it, so I'm asking that the Board take this up next week.
Bill?
No issues. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate what you're doing there. You do Liz and Art. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, thank you for the additional work on this. It's a priority for us. Okay, next on the agenda, to consider approval of the agreement with Triumph Roofing Incorporated for the repair replacement of the Central Fire Station roof and related repairs. Deputy Chief, let us know. JR, is on the line?
Good evening. So I guess I'll jump in. We've gone through.
We're having a hard time hearing you, JR.
You.
Oh, am I not clear?
We're hearing every word.
I'm not sure if that's better.
Sounds better.
Perhaps not.
We can hear you.
So far.
Okay, so we've come through quite a long process in getting an architectural design for all of the roof work that needs to be done at Central Fire. And so we were able to put that out to bid and received several competitive bids back that meet, I mean, Dave can speak to it better than I can, but that meet the budget requirements for the project. And we will, we are looking to execute the contract with Triumph Roofing to complete that work. This is the first step of at least two that will be required for necessary capital improvements at Fire Headquarters.
Yeah, it's gone along fine. It's taken a while. JR and Kathy Riley spent a lot of time weeding through the contractors working with the architect. I'm glad we get to the point that we can sign on it. And then get that done and then get into the HVAC portion.
Okay, so, and this was part of the capital budget from last year?
Yes.
Okay. And the second, it sounds like there's another contract coming potentially?
With the HVAC portion. Due to that cost, we had to go back to the drawing board, but we can at least get the roof done.
Okay.
Which is important. The HVAC, we can work around at the moment, but we got to stop the water from coming through.
Yes, well, thank you for all the work on this. I didn't work on this for a long time. Joe, any questions?
I remember my first year on the select board, I got the tour, and I've said, we got to deal with this now. How many years later, I'm glad it's finally happened. I note in the agreement that the work is expected to be completed by the end of October of this year. Is that? That's possible. We're not sure of the exact start date, but the time for big roof jobs is coming up, end of March or so. On the weather, you know, the weather's going to be good. Yeah. And you said, JR said that you received multiple bids? Is that right, JR?
We did. I believe we received six valid bids. Two of them were very competitive. And we had to resolve some issues with the AG to make sure that we were moving forward in an approvable fashion. But we were able to get those issues resolved, and we have the contract before you.
Do we have experience with this contractor, with Triumph?
We do not. They do have a similar name of the company that, the modular company that built the Bathing Beach Snack Shack, but it is not the same company.
So am I correct that you've done appropriate due diligence, that you're satisfied that they will do quality work and provide the roof that our fire department needs?
We followed up on references, yes, and the references came back that they were, that they were capable of doing the work and could accomplish it. And, you know, generally to budget and necessary quality.
Great. We have heard of them, so. Okay. Sometimes you get a company you've never heard of, and they're not from around here. Okay, that's, I'm going to make sure that you're comfortable. Okay, great. No other questions. Thank you.
Bill?
You know, no questions, just comments. You know, I wish this was done years ago. You know, my first year as a liaison, Kobe Wilcox and Chris Melantin were showing me around the fire station, and it really bothered me to see, you know, water stains on the walls, to hear stories that they had to use buckets to stop it leaking. So this is well overdue. I would encourage, you know, Tom and JR to sign this thing quickly and get it done. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Triumph Roofing Inc. The repair replacement of the Central Fire Station roof on the way to repairs in an amount not to exceed $666,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Next on the agenda is 2022 Annual Town Meeting War Article Discussion, Article W. Clear River Water System, other relation to borrow the water. Water Superintendent Russ Tierney.
Hey, everybody. How's it going?
Okay.
So last week, we did present this article, and the Board asked to go back and take a look at the financing for the tank a little more. We took the recommendations from Abraham's group, which was listed at about between $75 and $85 per year for residential customer. So with that, we dug a little deeper into this and looked at usage as a whole for each individual account, because their price was based on that every account in the system would pay the same price. After reviewing all that, we realized that our revenue classes, which we have seven, six of them, some used a lot more water than others. So our residential customers, if you divide per service, they only use about 6%. Each customer uses about 6% of the water that we produce. So we looked at multifamily residential, industrial, commercial, public authority, and the fire services. So then what we did is we took all of those usages, looked at what the percentage was compared to what each individual residential user uses, and came up with a factor to multiply our base charge to modify the charge to the larger people, largest facilities that use a lot of water. So basically, what we did is we used a baseline of about $65 per residential, single-family residential, used a modifier for commercial, industrial, multifamily residential, and the authorities in the hydrants to come up with capital charges for each one of those revenue classes. We were pretty, you know, we feel that the people that use the more water for certain things should pay a little bit more for this tank, especially if you have a fire service and things like that. This tank is going to help with all of the firefighting, which is our main priority. So based on all of that, we came up with each individual revenue class will have a certain charge. Then we took it a little bit further and looked at how it would affect the actual bill and how that looked as a percentage of increase for each person. So right now, residential is about a 6% to 7% increase on a bill. And the other ones are between 7 and 10, depending on industrial, commercial, or residential. So they'll have about a 7% to 10% increase on their bill annually. This is all annually. Just so that people don't get worried, it's not quarterly, it's annually. The other thing we are going to look at going forward, but I'm going to tell you right now, the residential will not go up. If anything happens, the residential individual may come down possibly. We're going to look more at the multifamily residential buildings, commercial, and industrial. We're going to look a little more at those on how much they use and how much demand they need if there is some type of fire in the building. So that's what we're going to look at going forward. So as of right now, the cost per resident will be $65 per year for each one for 30 years.
Okay. Joe?
So that works out to a little more than five bucks a month?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So even though we do quarterly billing and hopefully we'll be in monthly billing for the next five years or so, because that's something we definitely want to go to to help spread the money across an entire year. But yeah, it would be about that per month, yeah.
So it sounds like you've come up with different classifications based on water usage?
Well, we have six, well, we have eight in the actual system, but there's six major categories. Commercial, industrial, multifamily, residential. The fire services are a separate account, and our own, our residential. So those are the six major revenue classes that we have in the water system. So we'll look at each of those. And then the other thing I'm going to do is I'm going to actually look at each one and make sure that everything's assigned appropriately from what we took over, make sure this is all correct and to everybody's advantage, everybody, so to make sure we have everybody in the right class. So that we're starting right now.
But if your bill was calculated simply based on water usage, it wouldn't matter what class. It would simply, because it would all work out based on your water usage.
Correct, it would, but the water usage is hard to do something like the tank, because right now, one of the charges that we have in the system is the EMRAM, which is based on water usage, who uses the most water. But that money's earmarked solely for capital improvements, and it's the same thing all the time. If we have a capital charge like we have right now, we have the water treatment plant capital charge, and there's one other capital charge on the, those are the same for everybody. So keep it the same for everybody is the way to do this, so that one year, if we had a year where we didn't use a lot of water, we may not be able to pay the bills that we need to pay for the tank. So basically, that's why we would go with a single charge each resident per year.
Okay. But an annual cost of $65 puts this in perspective, so makes a lot of sense. Thank you. No other questions?
Thank you. Bill?
Ross, great job. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you for digging deep in that. Michelle, thank you as well. I know you helped out here. So, I mean, given what you outlined last week, I think $55 a year is well, you know, well-supported. Is the charge going to be, will it be a one-time capital charge once a year? Or be the $5 per month over the course of the year, just out of curiosity?
Based on your billing cycle bill, so if you're a monthly bill, you'll get charged per month. If you're a quarterly bill, which 90% of our residents are, they'll get charged per quarter. But I just want to make it perfectly clear that that $65 is single-family residential only at this point. The other charges are a little higher because of industrial, commercial. So they're a little different than the residential.
Understood. Great. All right, Ross, great job. Appreciate you diving into that.
Thank you, Ross, and Michelle. I think we certainly heard last week that the importance of this investment in the system, and really, it's an urgent need for the system. But we wanted to understand the cost for the ratepayer and the taxpayer, so thank you for doing that. And I think we, you know, can feel comfortable that we know, there's still more work to do on this, but the cost per year per resident in a single-family home will not be more than $65 a year.
Correct.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that. Do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
All right, I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article W.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Excellent. Thank you. So this will go to town meeting, so. Thank you. Thanks for us, you too. Okay, next on the agenda, FY '25 municipal budget review. Tom?
Sure, so I'll start this. I think that this is an interim kind of discussion. I wouldn't expect you all to vote the budget, hopefully until next week. But just in interim, we discussed, we presented the budget as it was two weeks ago. There's been very little change to it frankly since, a couple of hundred dollars to the library. We had, at the time, we weren't sure what the reductions in the library were going to be. We projected $10,000. It came in at $96.55. You see on Slide 5. That few hundred dollars then got taken from the Public Works page on Page 7. The Public Works line went up by a little bit, by the requisite amount, just in their overtime account. So a few hundred dollar shift here and there. I will note that, and it's related. I, we talked about at last week's joint session with the Capital Outlay Committee that we would, that we were recommending a bit of a change to their recommendations. And by the way, this has passed Capital Outlay on Monday, last night, where we were shifting some dollars that had been allocated previously to the Rec Department to do some pathway work. It turned out not to be enough to get that work all done, therefore, they wouldn't have been able to do any of it. We left them some money to get the design work done, so next year, they're ready to go. And in the meantime, we reallocated the money that had otherwise been allocated to them back to the Public Works Department to purchase a large mower, which will allow us to keep as a third mower on the out end of the world, so that we can keep the fields that everyone's really come accustomed to and likes with, under our new field maintenance program, cut the way that they need to be cut. So that, and then we allocated, the remainder, the balance of that budget was equal to, almost equal to, the amount of a, of a, one town, I believe, a pickup truck that the DPW had been seeking. So it worked out that we were able to shift that money from Rec to DPW, fill a couple of needs. The Rec Department actually stated that it will help them too, because they have to schedule all these fields. And if the fields weren't cut, they weren't going to be able to be used, and it was going to mess with the scheduling for the course of the year. So it was really a win-win-win across the board. Everybody was happy, and Capital Outlay reflected that, and they were unanimous about last night to reallocate those funds. So the operating budget has only changed by a couple hundred dollars. Again, let me know if you guys have some ideas. Happy to engage with that conversation. And hopefully, AdCom, I think, will be ready for budget presentation next Tuesday, next Tuesday night. So they'll, they'd meet after we do. So if we could, if you guys wanted to, you can vote this next week, and I could go into them with, in essence, a recommended vote from this board. So that's it.
Joe, questions?
So I looked at the presentation. I did not see any changes in proposed reductions. Is that?
It was only by a few hundred.
Right, right. There were no material changes.
No, only the one Tom described.
Yep, that was it.
And you described the library, and that we talked about was a reduction in pages. Was it also a reduction in hours?
It was. So I think she, the library had extended its Sunday hours for two additional Sundays a couple of years ago. They're cutting those back to what the schedule had always been by those two Sundays.
Yes, the two Sundays. Okay, yes, I remember that.
And then the remainder of those, of the money was coming from the page program.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
No questions. Thanks for the update, Tom. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Excellent. Yes, thank you for the update. I just wanted to have an opportunity for us to discuss it again. I'm expecting we'll vote next week. Just a few highlights. If you weren't at the last meeting when we discussed it, we are moving some money around from the Building Revolving Fund, so that will be more sustainable going forward. There's an outreach coordinator being added at the Center for Active Living, which I'm thrilled to see.
to see. And we don't have the new building yet, but we certainly want to continue with the excellent programming. The new social worker, who you may have seen, heard from last week, thrilled that that's in here. One of my, my major concern was about the reduction in DPW staff. So after speaking with Tom and Randy Sylvester, as, as well as the, the capital changes, I feel much more comfortable with that. So thank you to the Capital Outlay Committee for considering that. I think that we came to a good solution. And just to remind people that those, that reduction in staff, those are vacancies, so they're not actually people being laid off, but we saw some efficiencies there. The sustainability coordinator is in here, as we've discussed. The IT budget, I know we talked about cybersecurity. Do you have any concerns with that budget, that it's enough?
It, it's sufficient. It's, it's everything that Bill asked for, and he, he has, obviously, he has a full cybersecurity program that he's funding.
Yes, okay. Town meeting costs, we had discussed looking at what neighboring communities are doing, so curious to get that number.
Yep, we'll look into that.
The only other thing that kind of stuck out to me was related to the transfer station. There's an amount, I forget the exact number, but associated with recycling. So I don't think there's anything to do or change in this budget, but wondering if that Cleaner, Greener, Hingham Committee could maybe look into that. You know, any efficiencies there or, or anything that we can do as a community to offset those costs, because the, the cost of recycling is getting higher and higher. So certainly, we want to continue to do it, but looking at, at what makes sense from a financial perspective there.
I, I can report out, we heard from Randy Sylvester this morning that there's been a change to the mattress program that will net the town about $15,000.
Okay.
Which is always helpful, too. So we'll continue to look for those types of things whenever we can.
Yes, thank you. And yes, just for, for people, for perspective, some of these numbers we're talking about are $1,000, $5,000, $10,000. So know that we are going through this very carefully and scrutinizing every number, big and small. So, so thank you to the team for all the work on this.
Yeah, I mean, just, just to follow up on, on the recycling, I mean, the world has changed from where we could be generating revenue from it, to now it costs. And, and I know the, the department's really focused on trying to manage those costs, and we'll do what we can to support them. Yep.
Absolutely. Any, any, any other comments, Bill?
No, other than, you know, we'll have to take a hard look at what the DPW operation at the land, the transfer station. I mean, I have some ideas, but want to be careful about increasing costs too much. I mean, people just endured a significant property tax increase, so just be careful there. Thanks.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And I wasn't even referring to increased fees, just maybe other ideas or grant opportunities, or even other equipment to assist with recycling that the committee could look into. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. All right. So we're just reviewing. We will have it on the agenda again next week, and hopefully be ready for a vote. All right. Next on the agenda, appointments and/or reappointments.
I would like to propose the appointment of Jeff St. Mary to the Scholarship Fund Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Excellent. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment? Something we haven't discussed on tonight's agenda? Okay. Next, Town Administrator Select Board reports. Art?
Yes, I have two quick updates this evening. First, I just want to share that the Town of Hingham's been awarded a $15,000 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources through its Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Program. The purpose of the funding is to provide a, an advanced energy audit for the central fire station. Earlier this evening, we did hear about addressing the, the roof issues at the station. HVAC is an ongoing concern. We invested a lot of time last summer and fall looking for options. We discovered amongst other things that we needed some additional information that could help us apply for potentially significant state grant funding, and the audit will help us do that. The work is slated to be completed by September 30th of this year. In the second, I just want to provide a quick update regarding the MWRA. We have recently completed an RFQ to identify a consultant to help seven towns, including Hingham, identify water supply and demand needs, as well as infrastructure needs, to potentially access MWRA water capacity in the future. We're amidst finalizing a, a contract with a, with a total value of $158,000 to be apportioned across the seven communities, you know, based on, on water use. And all towns are applying to Plymouth County to use remaining ARP funds to pay for the project. And we're looking forward to that work being done by the end of October of this year.
Great. Thank you. Michelle?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Tom?
The only thing I had was that I did issue a one-day special, one-day special liquor permit, the liquor license, to the congregation, sherei shalom, for casino night on Saturday, March 23rd, 2024, from 8:00 p.m. to 10:30, with an estimated attendance of about 100 people. There will be a police detail present.
Excellent. Joe?
And I'm familiar with that, that event. So my only comment is, if you've, if the polls are still open, today is a primary day. You should go out and vote.
Yes. Open till 8:00, I believe?
I think so.
Okay. Bill?
Nothing. Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you. And I have nothing additional to report.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
So fun.
We don't hear that every day.
Yeah. Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I, and I as well. We are adjourned at 6:41 p.m. Thank you.